This is a concurrent meeting of the School Administrative Unit Number Twelve School Board and the Londonderry School District School Board. It is Tuesday, May tenth at 7:00 PM. We're in the Moose Hill Conference Room. That covers the first page of the agenda. Todd, would you lead the Pledge of Legis, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on mission under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nate, you want to lead us through this?
We have a number of people that we'd like to recognize this evening, first being recognition of Anne Marie Rich, who is finalist in New Hampshire's School Nurses of the Year. Anne Marie, why don't you come up?
Nancy, you have it.
Yep, sure. I'll wait for her to get up here.
You can stand right there.
Good evening, Anne. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement of students. Anne Marie is being recognized as being a leader in school nursing in the state of New Hampshire for mentoring new school nurses and providing an exemplary role model for other school nurses in the state. She exceeds all professional standards and is well-respected by the families, staff, and her colleagues at the Londonderry Middle School. It is a pleasure to recognize her many years of service with this certificate of achievement from the New Hampshire Nurses Association.
Congratulations. Thanks very much. Thank you. The next person we'd like to recognize this evening is Susie Swenson. The New Hampshire School Administrators Association gives out two awards each year. The first is for Superintendent of the Year. The second is given to, the Outstanding Service Award is given to an administrator who is not a superintendent of schools. And we are just thrilled that Susie Swenson was selected as the Outstanding Service Award winner for the school year. Congratulations, Susie.
I guess I had the privilege of meeting Susie when she worked at Total Sports for the first time buying t-shirts for laughing way back when. But, but over the years, Susie's worked here as benefit coordinator. She worked, she worked there, she worked as, as the, where is it? She, as a benefit coordinator, she worked as recruiting specialist, and then office assistant before coming the Director of Human Resources. I've been working in the district here as a school board member for god, almost twenty years. And I have to tell you, I've worked with four people in that position. And Susie has been by far the most outstanding person in that position. When I talked to staff, and I used to talk to them, and I used to, over the years, I used to get, "Oh my god, can you do something in that department?" When Susie came here and she started taking over, the answer is, "Don't worry, Susie's going to take care of it. It just may take her a few minutes." But that's the way it is. And that's the attitude that changed as Susie took over this department. And it transformed the relationships between us and the unions, us and the staff, and everyone else. And she's been such a positive attitude in this district. I can't explain how much difference she has made in that position. And I thank you, and the board thanks you, and I go back to many members of your whole board who thank you for everything that you've done here. Congratulations on this award. You well deserve it.
Susie will also be recognized at the Eddie's Award on June fourth, I believe that's the date. And Susie will get her belt and certificate. And congratulations once again. It's great. The third person we want to recognize is Sue Ballard. Sue couldn't make it this evening. But Sue has been elected, has been elected President-elect of the American Association of School Librarians. This is a national position. And she will be taking over the presidency, not next year, but the year after. And we want to congratulate Sue. It's an honor, and it's well deserved.
If I can add a couple of remarks about that. I, I think the best way to put it is the way Sue put it in the press release that was sent out about her announcement. Quote, "While I know that these are challenging times for school librarians, I cannot help but be excited and energized to be part of the leadership of AASL as the division continues to provide support and opportunities for professional growth and development for members, as well as continues to educate and inform communities and decision-makers about our essential role. I am confident school librarians will play a major part in meaningful education reform, and that our unique contributions to teaching and learning will be acknowledged and valued. Our students are counting on us to deliver on their behalf, and I know we will not disappoint them." And I'm sure we all agree that Sue is going to put her mind to a goal like that and be a major force in making sure that libraries and media centers across the country continue to play the same kind of vital role in education that they're playing here. So once again, Sue, sorry you couldn't be here, but congratulations. Moving on to the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing. I believe we have some recognitions.
I'd like to start with, I'll read the prepared statement here, and then I have a personal statement about this particular individual. Ellen Gens is retiring, and she's worked as a guidance counselor at Matthew Thornton School for the last twenty-five years. During that time, she's done a wonderful job of teaching, providing resources, listening, and counseling students in her caseload. Her expertise has been particularly important during times of crisis. However, at all times, she's worked to advocate for all kids, and especially for the ones that need extra help and attention. She's worked diligently with student families and outside therapists to provide a continuum of care for those in her charge. Throughout her tenure at Matthew Thornton, she has worked closely with staff and administration to fulfill her goals. She's been critical to the success of the PBIS program, and Ellen will be missed by all for her consistent effort, her detailed work, and her dedication to the students and her care. One of the reasons that I am on the school board today and have served for two and a third, or two and two-thirds terms, is because of Ellen Gens. I wish she would hear tonight. I know I'll run into her at the market or at Home Depot, as I often do, and I'll make sure to give her a hug for this. But Ellen came into my life in a family situation that was extremely, extremely difficult. And she was there for my twins, and helped us through a very, very difficult time. She connected us with the appropriate help in the state of New Hampshire. She was there to reunite our family. She was there to make sure that they were well cared for. And it's just simply, the best way to describe Ellen is, it was always in the best interest of the children. And for anyone that's been involved in the system, they would understand in the best interest of the children. So Ellen, if you're watching, I just really appreciated the help that you gave us. And I know I was just one family out of a thousand, so pay thank you too.
Thank you. Retiring will be Mary Hensel, who's a special assistant over at Matthew Thornton. Mary has worked in Londonderry School District as a special education assistant for over fifteen years. During this time, she has carried out her assignments accurately and effectively under the guidance of the case managers with whom she has worked. After working for many years in a resource room setting, Mary has recently brought her assistance to students within the classroom setting. In retirement, Mrs. Hensel is looking forward to a much anticipated forty-first wedding anniversary trip to Ireland. So hopefully she's going to be visiting some pubs and golfing. And he's taking her husband. We wish her safe travels and a happy retirement. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Yes, I have Bev Robichaud, who's the district receptionist. Bev began her career in Londonderry School District in the fall of nineteen ninety-six as an instructional assistant at North School. With her love of children, she enjoyed her work so much at North School for three years. In the summer of ninety-nine, Bev transferred over to the district office to become the receptionist. From the words of Connie McGinnis, "The term reception is a misnomer for the amount of work accomplished by Bev each day. She handled the constant flow of her customers," as she would call them, "with a friendly, helpful attitude and professional demeanor. No task was too large or too small for Bev, whether it was stuffing envelopes for the HR department, or setting up procedures for summer enrichment, sign-ups, for the assistant superintendent. Bev will now be enjoying her travels to her lake house, spending time with her family that includes six grandchildren. We wish her the very best, and our sincere thanks. Bev has been a tremendous receptionist. She's a friend, she's a wonderful ambassador for the district. Anyone that comes into the office, she meets them with a smile, says hello, and puts people at ease. We're going to miss Bev in that position. Wish her well."
Thank you. Nancy?
I hope they have one.
Oh, I got one.
I'm sorry.
Read the prepared statement, then I have another story. But you don't need the Kleenex for this one.
That's why, I'm sorry.
Lynn Sapsus became the LEAP Coordinator in nineteen eighty-eight, when it was first located at the middle school. She developed a program that integrated special needs youngsters into a nursery school setting with other students. The program was designed to identify those skills that youngsters needed to enter the least restrictive school placement, and to systematically target and teach those behaviors using peer models. With creative scheduling and optimizing staff's own strengths, Lynn ran a well-oiled machine, except for one exception, which I'll explain. The LEAP program has been recognized as one of the model preschools in special education programs in the state. The school district has been most fortunate to have Lynn overseeing the program for its identified special needs and preschool population. And I do understand it's also the only private, at least it was when it was first announced, the only private school that's accredited for this particular, in this particular area in the state of New Hampshire. So we, we appreciate that. I actually first met Lynn over at Action Boulevard. The school district did not have a space for the students, and this was back when we were in a really large growth mode. So they moved the LEAP program next door to my industrial business. And when they first moved in, I was just a bit concerned. I mean, we had these three thousand PSI nitrogen tanks strapped to the wall, and we were processing chemicals, and, but it was an industrial one zone, so we could do that there. But we had conversations, and we all got along very well. As a matter of fact, kids came over to see my, my dog Max, who came to work with me every day at Halloween, when he would dress up as whatever, a pumpkin, or as James Bond, or all that. But the time I remember the most is when Lynn came over one day. And you have to understand, a month before, our company is an imaging business, so we had brought, I found this mouse at home, it had this huge ears on it, so I put it in a five-gallon pail, and I brought it to work. And I went to shoot the mouse, because I mean-
With a camera.
Because I was going to use it, I was going to use it in some marketing program that we were doing for this company down in Charles River left. So, we're going to use that with them. And, but then I went to look in the bucket, and the mouse was gone. So a month later, Lynn comes over, and she goes, "Are you having any problem with mice?" And I'm like, and I just looked at her and said, "Well, no, why?" And she goes, "Oh, we have a terrible problem. We just invested with them over at the LEAP program." Because they have, you know, snacks for the kids and all that, so. I haven't told her this yet. I was hoping to wait till her retirement. So I was told that, so it might be a little bit away, and Lynn is going to be helping us in the future. So, but the reality is, Lynn, it was my fault that the mice- We appreciate what she's done, and this is, I mean, it's good news for us. She's just been incredible in the district, and everybody knows her, knows her energy, and even the little mice don't bother her. Thank you.
Is that the place that you moved out of when you broke your lease because rodent infestation?
Yeah.
Yeah? Upcoming meetings, May twenty-fourth, regular meeting here. Also, June seventh, regular meeting here. Baccalaurate for the senior class is June ninth, that's a Thursday, six-thirty at the Palace Theater. Commencement is Friday, June tenth, seven PM at the Verizon Center. Plenty of seating for everybody. Adult Ed graduation is the following Monday at LHS, six PM, at a regular meeting here, June twenty-first, at seven PM. On to committee reports. Becky?
At yesterday's student council meeting, candidates for next year's executive board gave their speeches. The new board will be inducted next Monday, May sixteenth, in the LHS cafeteria. National Honor Society also held their elections for, for next year. The NHS induction vote is in place at thy school tomorrow.
Becky, can you get a bit closer to the microphone? Thanks. Yeah?
This Saturday, the fourteenth, will be a busy day for the student council. Many volunteers will be at Max Apples for Art and Action Day, some to paint a picnic table, and also to be human statues. One will be a businessman, another a farmer. Students will also be at the high school track to help out the Special Olympics track at Kildmeade. The music department has many concerts and performances this month. The Triumph Music Honor Society is hosting the Children's Concert and Music Fair, which aims to teach younger students about different instruments and grow interest in music at younger ages. The LHS solo and entabl' concert will take place on May seventeenth, and the following night is the Band and Jazz Spring Concert. Following the tradition, this concert will be senior night, and all senior performers will be honored. The Spring Concert for Chorus and Orchestra will be on Wednesday, May twenty-fifth. Marching Rite will perform and Memorial Day Parade, and the following night will be the Music Bank Day. And then, at the next school board meeting, I will be sharing my report with next year's student council representative, so she will be here too.
So that's your next meeting, or your last meeting, next time? Well, we're going to hate to see you go. Thanks very much. Steve?
Evening. This comes in from Monica Koshigan at the middle school. She wants to invite everyone to the annual spring concert on this Saturday, the thirteenth. I'm not sure of the schedule, maybe on the, on the middle school website, but you'll have to check that. From Greg Warren, Adult Education Graduation, we heard will be on Monday, the thirteenth. Just double-check, our, our agenda says six, his email said six-thirty, so someone should just double-check that. From Debbie Gomez, fifth grade at the South School. My fifth grade class, excuse me, performed The Great Debate last week. Patriots and Loyalists debated causes of the American Revolution to audiences made up of fourth and fifth graders, as well as staff members and parents. There were four performances altogether. Every class member had a part, debater, interviewer, camera operator, bailiff, and moderator. The audience was allowed to ask questions afterwards, and also vote for the side that made the best case. Should they fight for independence or remain loyal to the king? This year, the Patriots won once, and the Loyalists three times, which is highly unusual. The kids were fabulous, and it will be on Leo. From Bonnie at Moose Hill, this week, the Moose Hill staff is enjoying the PTA's generous hospitality during Teacher Appreciation Week. Yesterday, it was breakfast, today was lunch, tomorrow was chocolate and raffle gifts, with more to follow on Thursday and Friday. Our new vests are beautiful, and the staff would like to thank the PTA for their generosity. Later this month, our kindergarten students will be visiting the elementary school that they will attend in the fall. This is an eagerly anticipated field trip for our students. On May twenty-fifth, Moose Hill will host an open house for our incoming kindergarten students and their families from six-thirty to eight. From Annie Colachi at the middle school, the wellness after-school activities are well underway. There's kickboxing, it's their third season of that. Dodgeball with thirty students, and paper-making with twenty-five students. These programs are funded by wellness auction money, and are run for no charge for the students to stay mentally and physically active. LMS welcomes Roger Esley, an acclaimed author, to speak to the staff on the early release day on executive functioning skills in the content area, specifically using visual tools for differentiating content instruction. This is from the middle school as well, from Betsy Domrich and Doug Stith. The Monsoon Students wrote business letters to be mailed to specific Londonderry businesses, asking if they would display a concept cartoon which students create in science. I have a sample here, which I will pass along to the board. The concept cartoons are intended to get people to think about science concepts, and will hopefully be displayed in areas where people will see them. For example, the display board outside of Max's ice cream stand will be one place. These signs will be displayed. Links to the Monsoon webpage are provided so that people can see the answers. This is also written up in the Londonderry Times, as here's a copy of that, I'll just shoot that around as well. And, this last story is somewhat apropos, because I see that Nancy Fokon is on the agenda this evening. This comes from Pat Slowzak, and I'll just read this, it's an email. Shortly before April break, my class met with Nancy Fokon to discuss the Vegetable of the Month program, and how much they liked it or disliked it. Well, after they had tasted the snap peas, they shared their thoughts with her. One thing led to another, and they ended up questioning Mrs. Fokon on the nutritional values of some of the foods that were served for lunch, specifically potato smiles. They had read in the Eat This, Not That book, they were not very healthy for children. Mrs. Fokon listened carefully, answered their questions, and then sent the class an email containing the nutritional values of the potato smiles and the other choices, showing the children that they were in fact eating the healthiest option. The children also spoke about having a special menu one day to honor Garfield, and requested that she give it some thought. Now, I'm a US history teacher in eighth grade. I read Garfield, I'm thinking, how fantastic is it the elementary school is celebrating our twentieth president, who although he so only spent, you know, six months in office, and was assassinated, I thought that was unusual for the, for the elementary schools to be doing that. But I kept reading this email, and I got clarification. Again, Mrs. Fokon listened to them, and asked what they considered good foods to have for the Garfield lunch. He's very, you know, mysterious, this guy Garfield. The students had already thought about this, and came up with lasagna, hot dogs, orange foods, carrots, peaches, oranges, and this is where it's kind of clicked that maybe this wasn't the Garfield that I'm familiar with, a tulip-shaped cookie, because Garfield likes to roll around in the flowers and eat them. And I realized, in all the reading I've done about Garfield, I didn't come across that fact. So it's there that I realized we're talking about Garfield the cat, and Mrs. Fokon agreed to have this lunch on the third, and the students in all the elementary schools enjoyed the special dishes. So thank you for that. And that is all I have.
You're aware that Arthur is an aardvark.
I am, so thank you. That's correct. All set.
Nancy?
I don't have anything for you to tell, Mr. Chairman.
John?
Hey, I don't have a committee report, but I do have one announcement. On Wednesday, May eleventh, at the Tupperware Music Center, at six fifteen, doors are going to open, and the movie's going to begin at seven o'clock. There's a movie on the Road to Pasadena video that was produced by Brandon Cardwell. Supposed to be an excellent movie, so just hope everyone attends it and takes a view of the movie. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
I don't have anything. The special education meeting was moved till a little later this month. But, and I don't have the details on this, however, the Destimation Imagination has an event on the Common this weekend, on Saturday. I know they, there's an insurance company that's giving ten-dollar donations, and then they have a plant sale, so there's a number, and there's a food sale, a barbecue of some type. So if you can stop by on the Common, or if you're driving by and you see everybody on the Common, that's why they're there. So stop by for the DI people, because how large is it now in the district? As far as the number of DI participants?
There's at least eight, ten, and there's, you know, six to eight, because I'm-
Eight, close to seventy, I think.
Yeah, so seventy to a hundred students involved that you could benefit by stopping by. Thank you.
Thank you. And I skipped over asking again, so at this time, I'd like to pause and ask if there's any comment from anybody in the room, anything, any of you would like to raise. I should have said public comment.
Well, this is just an announcement Nate had asked me to make. We're very excited to once again present the Blackhawk helicopter.
Oh, really?
It will be coming to Matthew Thornton this Friday, weather permitting and equipment permitting. But Lieutenant Colonel Kennedy, who's one of the dads of one of our fourth graders, and he also has children at the middle school and high school, this is his third visit with the Blackhawk helicopter, but it's always very, very exciting, not just for the school, but for everybody that gets to see the little air show that he puts on when he takes off, and also when he's coming in to land. So, in the past, he's been there from nine-thirty to about one-thirty, the time is approximate, but please be watching the skies around nine-thirty, because it's very exciting to see. The Londonderry Police and the Londonderry Fire have been alerted, and they'll take appropriate precautions so people don't think we're being invaded.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
More importantly, did we call the airport?
That's up to Matthew.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, thanks very much. We are down to the deliberation session, Nate?
Yes. Appointment of Representative Master Plan Steering Committee. And I believe the recommendation is Mr. LaFerriere.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Ron, second by Nancy. All those in favor of appointing John to the Master Plan Steering Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's an extension?
Next.
Okay. Four zero one. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you. Next. Roof bids?
Yes, Chuck.
I've got a couple of projects that we've been working on, and have some information on the bid results, and want to get board approval to proceed. First, the roofing bids. We did put out a request for bids into the newspaper, into the Construction Summary magazine, contacted a number of vendors, sent out plans, specifications, had bid walkthrough, and bids came in, and unfortunately, although we were expecting it, the numbers were somewhat higher than what we had budgeted. The roofing products that we use in the schools are petroleum-based, and as everybody knows, the cost of oil has gone in six months from about eighty-two dollars a barrel to as much as a hundred and fifteen dollars. Got the information on the bids, reassessed the conditions of the roof, and we do have a multi-year maintenance plan going out to FY two thousand and twenty-two, and have a lot of roofing projects on there. So we did an assessment, an up-to-date assessment, the condition of the roofs, looked at the bids that we had, and tried to use the money as wisely as we could. And the recommendation we have is a complete replacement of the roof at the Matthew Thornton Gym, a hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. An overcoat, repair and an overcoat on the membrane roof for the kitchen at the high school, seventeen thousand, five hundred and nine dollars. At North School, a complete replacement of the roof at the gym lobby, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. And also a complete replacement of the kitchen slash boiler room roof at North School, thirty-six thousand and eighteen dollars. Grand total of two hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. AW Thury and Company was the low bid in each of those categories, makes it a little bit easier for us, we're working with one vendor. And just as an FYI, the Maintenance Trust for FY twelve had two hundred and ninety thousand dollars for, that was scheduled for roofing projects.
Chuck, when we did this work, how long do we expect the life cycle to be on, once we do it?
The overcoat for the kitchen is a repair of the existing roof, and then a waterproof overcoating. That comes with a ten-year warranty. The work for Matthew Thornton and North School is a twenty-year, non-pro-rated warranty, and the expected life is thirty to seventy years on these built-up roofing projects.
If, on the overcoat, what would it cost to replace that? Is it warranted at this point?
Is it warranted at this point? Are you because of looking at the warranties, and if we do all this work, does it make sense to go and just do it and get them out of the way?
It would be around $90,000 to replace the kitchen roof.
So 90 versus 17, five?
Right.
Right, okay. Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, what we've been doing is some of the roofs that are in fair condition and have been approved for an overcoating, approved by the manufacturer, if we can't, we know we can't get to them to replace in the next couple of years, we go ahead and do the overcoating so it buys us some time in the long-range planning.
Yeah, you're not even close between overcoating versus new, so it's, no, we're doing okay. Thanks.
Chuck, do you want to explain what you found on the high school roof, so the reason that price is higher? Do you want to put it out and explain that?
Right, there's a couple of reasons. We didn't really, from the budgeted number to the actual number, we didn't really miss it by that much. We had originally planned on doing the old lobby roof, the original lobby entrance to the high school, and the connecting corridors. The front lobby, which connects Phase 5, is not as old as the other part, so we're probably going to be okay for several more years on that. But in going through this and talking with the contractors, the only way to get to the section of roof that we wanted to do was from the front of the building, so we probably would have been doing some damage to the front lobby roof, so we included that also. So that was about a $40,000 up from the original plan. We also found in doing some core samples that one of the insulation layers in the lobby at the high school does contain asbestos, which was a big surprise to us because it was built in '74, '75, and asbestos building materials were pretty much open. Not sure how that happened, but it's not unheard of, and it certainly wasn't illegal either. But there is an asbestos felt layer there, and there's about a $30,000 upcharge to get an abatement company in and to do the coordination with the roofing company, because you can only get off so much per day to make sure that the roof gets covered. So that's what led to the increase in the high school lobby project.
The North School roof, you just indicated the boiler in the kitchen, why is that so high, $36,000?
It comes out to about $18 a square foot.
Wasn't there another school that was listed that had a boiler in the kitchen that was quite a bit less?
It must have been a difference in the square footage of the area.
All right, is there a motion?
So move to accept the bid for the roofing. AW Thury and Company for $346,142 to be taken out of the maintenance trust account.
Second. Motion by Ron, second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to nothing. Chuck, next one's yours, too.
We hired a fire protection engineer to go, literally go through every single classroom, office area of Matthew Thornton, and do a fire sprinkler design for us. We met with the Leninery Fire Department, met with the chief and fire marshal, and got preliminary approval on the drawings. We did a request for bids in the newspaper, in Construction Summary Magazine, had eight companies that requested bids, we sent the information out. There were six companies who attended the pre-bid meeting that we had last month, and we had the bid opening last Friday afternoon. And when you open bids, it's always feeling anticipation, you want to see if you get the number right, you want to see how close the numbers are. And I had this real sick feeling as I opened the envelopes and pulled the numbers out. The prices, the bids were so far apart, in fact, the high bid was more than double the low bid. So we spent a lot of time that afternoon, met with representatives from each of the companies, talked with the fire protection engineer, trying to sort out what happened. Yesterday, Peter and I met with the owners of Tri-State Sprinkler. They were the low bidders. Went through a lot of things yesterday afternoon, and then late yesterday afternoon, we took another walk through the building room by room with the plans. And after all that, we are comfortable with Tri-State's number, that they will be able to complete the work according to the specifications and the timeframe. Tri-State Sprinkler has done work for us before, they were subcontractor for Procon, they did the fire sprinkler system at North School, and they did the high school gymnasium project. We will get a performance bond for the work, and there is a pretty substantial late penalty for not completing the project on time.
Where is Tri-State based out of?
Leninery.
Good.
They're on Page Road.
Thank you. I believe Hampshire is also.
Yes, they're on Woodworth.
Yeah, that's your microphone being turned up. Can you pull a bit closer to you?
Sure. After reviewing all of them, was there any explanation or logical perspective on why there was such a variance in the cost?
Sure. This project's a little bit different from most sprinkler projects. All of the other schools that we've done have been part of a bigger project, expansion or renovation. We've had Procon involved, we've had a general contractor, construction manager on site. So the sprinkler contractor just had to come in, make some connections, and do their work. So it's a pretty simple thing for them. What we're doing on this one is the sprinkler contractor was the general contractor. They had to arrange all the other aspects of the work, the site work, the trenching, the new pipe coming in, ceilings, removing lights, coordination on the painting, that sort of thing. So they had to act as a general contractor. The high bid, which was TRB Development, was actually a general contractor that was setting up to do, just like a Procon project. They were going to be a general contractor, they were hiring subcontractors, there were supervisors and supervisors, I think, in fact, there were more supervisors than there were people that were going to be doing the work in the building. They had a different company for every trade of it, and that's an okay way of doing it, but not on a $200,000 eight-week project, fast tracking like that. So a lot of things were really overpriced. Hampshire Fire, in fact, we had received a budgetary number from them about four years ago through Procon, we were planning to do something with Matthew Thornton, and the number at that time came in at $225,000, kind of in line where we're at. Hampshire Fire, good for them, they're very busy right now, they have a lot of work on books, and so their pricing was a little bit higher because they didn't need the work as badly as Tri-State. They only have one other project going on this summer. Right now, they're scattered with projects throughout New England that they're going to be wrapping up in the next couple of weeks, so they really wanted this job bad, they wanted something for the summer, they wanted to be close to home, and the numbers worked out for them and for us.
Chuck, did you get a not to exceed on the bids?
This is an actual bid. This is a firm bid.
This is the bid, but my point is that when we go, if we do go with Tri-State, I'd like to see it not to exceed so that we don't get into a, you know, cost-plus type environment, or the contractor didn't expect or didn't see something that now is something that he has to do. If he's going to go with the low beta 2047, then it makes sense to me to get him as a not to exceed.
It will be, that will be the actual number in the contract.
My point is, if, let's say he goes in and he finds X, and X is going to be $50,000 more, I don't want to pay for that.
Part of the conditions of the specifications in the bid, that there wouldn't be any unknowns. They were obligated to come in, spend the time, which they did, they were in the building during the April vacation week for a couple of hours going through. Any unknowns, any problems are on them, except if we find asbestos, pipe coverings or insulation, that would be on us, but we do have a contingency for that. So unless there's a change order for some unknown reason-
Change order by us.
-that we initiate-
Right.
-this is the-
Okay, all right.
If you flip the sheet over, based on their bid and some of the other numbers we have, this is the project.
So I'm really looking at not to exceed at this level? Okay. All right, is there a motion on this bid?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion by Steve, second by Ron. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five, nothing. Very good, thank you.
Just a statement on this, it's been a long time coming to get sprinklers in Matthew Thornton's school. We've been working on it a while. Thank you.
Nate?
Yes.
Corporal punishment policies.
Yes. Kim? The policies that you have here, the policies, procedures, regulations, and exhibits are up for second reading.
Yes. The first one is an amendment to policy JGA, our corporal punishment policy, which just references the new policy, regulation, and exhibit, which is mandated by the new RSA that went into effect September 1st.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept policy JGA for the second reading.
Second. Motion by Ron, second by John. Before we go to a vote, I'd just like to confirm there's no change since the first reading?
There are none.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing.
Great. Second up, we have three policies up for first reading. Fund balance policy, DAB, school bus idling policy, EEA CD, and food service meal pricing, EFBB. Mr. Currow? Where do you go?
Idling.
Without the start of his car to get warm. I think we did, I think we did them all by inclusion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Do we have to say all of them? Because you-
We only said one, yeah.
I only said one.
We need to-
Well, here's an air, so we can take another vote.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move the policies JGAA, JGAR, and the incident report JGAA-E.
Is there a second?
JGAA.
JGAA, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ron, second by Nancy, and this is on item 6.2 B, C, and D. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five, five, nothing. Thank you for catching that. I thought that we were doing it by inclusion in the first reference, so that got by me too.
Okay, Peter, fund balance policy.
Yes, sorry about that, I thought it'd take a little longer.
Okay, it would have if we had done it right, but-
Fund balance policy is before the board, thanks to the Gatsby. Gatsby Statement 54 takes effect for all local governments whose fiscal year ends June 30 of 2011 and beyond. Now, those of us who've been here a while know that we don't have the same luxuries bestowed on us by the state as a municipality, friends, when it comes to year-end surplus and fund balances, which is why I wrote the policy to follow state law, should state law ever change and allow a surplus of funds to be retained by school districts. The policy does state purposes where the board, through the budget process, as we did this year, using a special article, could use anticipated year-end surplus for a particular purpose. And I listed them on the policy, capital, sped, maintenance, special emergencies. That's the general operating part of the policy. The policy does go on then and talk about retention of earnings for special revenue funds. As we know, there is one special revenue fund in the district, and that is the food service fund. The recommendation there is to adopt the policy where unreserved fund balance or surplus of funds equal to 3.5% of the equity of the program is maintained on a current year. I used the, as a benchmark, the last audited year, so we don't get into estimates of upcoming FY 11 or 12. So when we're looking at, in this case, if the policy was adopted, if we were looking at what the fund, what the unreserved, what's the reserve fund balance for the program would be, we'd be using FY 10 audited numbers and then going forward. So each year, if this policy is adopted, we will know, even though we don't get the actual presentation of the audit till like November, December, we will know by October, when Nancy comes in, does her first update, we will know by then that the program equity is X, and using the formula, the reserve fund balance will be Y for the program moving forward for the year. The purpose of, as I said, is to stay in compliance. If we do not have, for whatever reason, a fund balance policy, then we would have a qualified financial statement going forward.
Any questions from the board?
I've just got one comment on it. I've looked at this one here on the special revenue. Again, we have to have the policy, there's nothing there. I'd like to reduce the fund balance for the food service down to about 3% instead of 2, 3.5%. Again, we carry a dollar in our normal budget, if there was something catastrophic, and I was thinking about this, 3% of the number here is about 3.5%, and I think the number showed out to $46,000. That's, you'd have to lose a freezer completely on that. If we had something like that, we'd have insurance and we had everything else on it. So I think the numbers, you know, it'll reduce the amount that we have to carry forward in that line. Right now, we're carrying $35,000. This at 3.5% brings it up to about $46,000, almost $47,000. So this reduces it down a little bit more, and we can see how that works. I don't see that as a major issue personally, so I would like to amend it to 3%.
Nate, Peter, any response?
The only reason I chose 3.5 was talking to people in the area. Remember, the purpose of the reserve number is really a measurement of risk to the program, and that you always want to, in my case, protect the operating budget from ever using monies to cover a deficit. The law is clear going forward that any deficit from the food service program will have to be covered by the operating fund. Also, one of the benchmarks that's used, and again, it's a guide, and this is where I come up with 3.5%. The rule of thumb is that you always want a minimum of three months of operating monies. And so I looked at it, and I backed it down. Actually, I started with 5 to 7, which is the fund balance policy for the town, and I said that's too much based on the capital that she needs, so I went down to 3.5. 3 is fine, I would ask the board not to go any lower than 3, because now you're getting into a point where the dollar value becomes to a point where if she goes below that, the operating fund could be covering it. I mean, 3 is, 3 is fine with me.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm comfortable with 3 also.
Hearing none, is there a motion?
So move the fund balance policy, DAB, with the modification of 3% for the group's special revenue fund balance.
Is there a second? Second. Motion by Ron, second by John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's five, nothing. Thank you. Idling?
Peter. Idle away.
I'm idling. Before I say, there are copies of the policies, if anybody, you don't want one, but the next one, the title says, "School Bus Idling Policy," but it does also take into account delivery trucks and idling of cars with parents picking up or dropping off students. This comes to us because of a new law, RSA 211A, requiring the school district to go through a checklist, and I think I made a copy, if not, I have one I can show you, a checklist of indoor air quality items. items, and one of the, the top three is required indoor air quality policy. Um, what I did was, um, I can't take all the credit for, for putting this together, uh, from scratch. I wrote my friends from National ASBO and got a series of, uh, bus idling policies, um, that, that I could use, and I used a couple of them, kind of put them together. Uh, the purpose of this, for the, for the, for everyone who's listening, is one, uh, to have a, um, limit of idling of the buses and, uh, and delivery trucks, especially near any, uh, in, in air intake, you know, units. The purpose of this is to not have buses idle for, I'll, you know, say 15, 20 minutes, allow the diesel fumes to go into the, into the buildings. So if the policy is passed, we would, I've given a copy of this proposed policy to both bus companies, and so they reviewed it and make sure that they don't have any problems, and they didn't. Um, if the policy's passed, we will designate no idling areas along the schools, and will, will be signs put up, uh, designating that, you know, there's no idling, or idling no more than five minutes, whatever, whatever the, the case may be. The bus, the policy does have exceptions for cold weather for the diesels. Uh, as you know, most of the buses run diesel, so there are exceptions. And that's, one of the things I got from, my next policy was from Pennsylvania, that talked about the exception for cold weather, uh, for diesels. Um, and it's really, from check and ice point of view, it's kind of a common sense policy, you know, to, to monitor indoor air quality. But to comply with state law, uh, we have to have a formal policy for idling of vehicles, I'll call it, which includes school buses, uh, delivery trucks, and then also, uh, as best we can, uh, the, the areas where the parents will gather waiting for the kids to come in, come, come back from school.
Questions?
Yeah, how do you expect to enforce the part about the parents?
Same way we do the dogs.
Yep.
What dogs?
I, I just, I know you have to have it in the policy.
I understand. What, what we'll do is, for example, I'll use Matthew Thornton, I'll use the horseshoe, then.
Right.
We'll just have signs that says idling, we'll have signs that no idling. So they'll have to, you know, they can stay there, obviously, and just, but just turn the engines off, and when the kid comes in, we'll start the car and go home. I mean, I, I understand you're saying about the enforcement, but we can only do so much.
Okay.
So.
So we're just, signs is enough, that's all we're doing. Okay.
Steve?
In the same breath, you used common sense and we need signs. And this takes me back to, uh, the dog issue. Here we go. Well, actually, it was George. But in his absence, um, I, I just said the sign guy. I just don't see the need for signs. I mean, if it's the policy that there is an idling, real issues with the diesel vehicles, so this settles. Although, I think this statement, um, diesel exhaust poses a serious health risk to children, serious. Health risk to children. So if that's true, why don't we have propane or gas fueled buses? And it's common sense, so why would we need a sign? The bus company knows, that's the bulk of the traffic in front of the schools. Um, I didn't catch in here, near air intakes. You know, the policy's fine, but as far as the signs go, it's just, that's my one fifth. It's common sense.
I, I think you need the signs to go back to the pre-discussion for enforcement. Now, I don't think we need to have a sign every five feet, so to speak, but I think in order to enforce it, either through the, even with, even with bus company, or delivery trucks, or whatever, like, like anything else, you need to have a sign that designates the area, and then you can have the, the proper enforcement. And I, and I think the, the three or four that I looked at, uh, all had signs as part of the policy and, and way of, I'll say, managing, uh, vehicle idling, uh, near, near the buildings. I understand that we won't go spend a fortune on signs.
How much will signs cost?
Right, that's.
Chuck, you know much, I can't remember how much a sign would cost.
Around 30, 30, 35 dollars.
How many signs?
35 dollars.
How many signs? 50, 25?
I would, I couldn't tell you now.
Couple per school.
Yeah.
So around 10.
1,000 to 15, let's say.
Couple hundred dollars.
Because you may have, you may have more than one area. Let's say for the high school, you may be looking at the front of the building, where obviously the buses come in, and also in the back of the building, where you, where you get your delivery trucks. You could have two areas that you want to make, you want to have control over, uh, vehicle idling.
You know, Stonyfield Yogurt has a policy on this, um, that they've distributed to their drivers. Um, did I make the signs for them? They don't have a single sign on this issue. Um, they believe they save somewhere in the area 30% on their fuel, because the people that, the drivers know what they're supposed to do, that they're not supposed to idle. They're just supposed to take certain routes. The, I, I don't know, I just, and I don't think it's $35 a sign, because the signs, you're gonna have to drill through, you're gonna have to core through the concrete sidewalk and install these things, but it's up to you guys.
Well, my question would be, if we're not gonna put signs up, how are we gonna alert people? I mean, I agree, I think it's common sense, but, you know, I have a kid at Matthew Thornton, I forget from time to time. You know, I would forget at the bank if there wasn't a sign at the bank, so.
Oh, I think once, once we designate, um, the, the signs are going out, I, we have no problem putting up a, I'll use the phrase, a memo and post it on the web, and, and, and.
Well, maybe, maybe we want to look at who we need to communicate this with. If it's school bus drivers, they work for us. We should be able to take the Stonyfield approach there and have it communicated to them as a, as an issue of employment. For, um, parents and people picking kids up, we have enough communications to use the word vehicles that, you know, come home from schools, that we should be able to piggyback that way. And that, in my mind, would tend to leave, basically, the transient, delivery drivers, things like that. Maybe that indicates that where we need to put a sign or two is at a loading dock, or someplace where the delivery trucks do their delivering, and not other places.
Except in some areas, the buses and the parents are in the same spot.
Sure, but the buses and the parents would have been communicated, too. So if we need to put a sign there to reach the delivery guys, then the fact that parents are there, too, doesn't hurt anything.
I'm not, I don't wanna get into a sign fight. I'm just talking to them from what, talk with police. Like, we can't enforce it if there's not a sign. That's what the signs just want to say.
Well, let's, let's take a look at what, what, what we're really trying to do here. We're trying to keep the buses from idling, right? Because that, that's, as it states in the top of this memo, it, it's the, it's a, a threat to the, the risk, the health risk to the children, right? So when you look at that, that's the majority of the problem.
Yes.
Right? If we, if we take the no sign approach and we educate our kids, it's like anything else. You know, I get into a car, when I, when, when I was educating my kids about seat belts, it was, hey, put your seatbelt on. By my kid. Right? It's, it can be very similarly done at school, too, where we educate the kids that, you know, hey, you're getting dropped off, make sure your parents don't idle. And we teach them what that means. And then if it, you, you don't do the signs at all, and let's just see if we can do it that way.
I understand what you're saying, but having been involved in a, in a variety, as you have, in, in Mr. Campo and others, of large events in the building, uh, at the schools, you go over to a parent, and, and you're right, we'll get back to the dog issue.
Mm-hmm.
You go to a parent, and you say, "Sir, um, I notice you've been here, say, 10 minutes." And you, and you turn your, your car off until your student, your kid comes up. "Why?" "Well, we have a no idling. Where's the sign?" That, that's the problem you run into. So I'm not asking for a billion signs and to stand, I'll limit them as best I can. But when you get somebody there, you ask them politely to do something, um, we, you know, we, we got signs that you know at the high school, one way, and they go right through. So.
Well, then why bother?
That's right. Well, because, because you have, because then you have an enforcement, then you have the, the ability for enforcement.
Well, well, how do you enforce it, though? I mean, it, it's not like we can give people school district tickets.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Um, it appears the board is, that, as far as the content of the policy, the board doesn't have any big issues. The issue that we're talking about is signs and number of signs and available. Peter, at second reading, could you come back and, so that we can come definitively and say, if we're gonna put signs up, it would be five signs, or three signs, or 10 signs, um, at a cost of X, and here's where they would be located, and then the board could do that. I think it's general understanding, too, that we would notify all our vendors regarding the idling policy.
Yes.
Uh, bus companies, the two bus companies are already aware of it, um, and then we can take it from there, and then the board can make a decision. We have two more readings on it, and this way you'll have more definitive answer on, on the signs, um, you know, no idling.
You might also consider just painting it on the pavement.
Yeah, but idle hands, idle cars are the devils anywhere.
Mostly it's the buses. All right, is the, is there a motion, or are we ready to move to a motion? Any other discussion?
One other consideration. We'll, we'll need to change the famous Londonderry statement at the football games.
What's that?
About warming up the buses.
Oh, boy.
Well, you can warm it up just, just 10 minutes before.
Well, we can always hang the sign.
All right, so, so if the board approves the first reading with the understanding that you will come back with additional information on the signs.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is there such a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by John, second by Ron. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing. Thank you very much, Peter.
Really good.
And, um, is there from yours, too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm here for a while, I think.
You ready?
That's why I'm sitting here. The last one is food service meal pricing policy. And this comes about, um, through the Department of Ed for, for one, and certainly, as it's in the bottom, circular A87. And the purpose of this is to formally state that the school board will review the lunch policy on an annual basis. We do that, but it becomes formal in writing. Second, stated some guidelines that the pricing will, uh, be, uh, priced to sufficiently maintain the program, uh, maintain the, um, retain, the, um, yeah, retained, the, um, reserve balance that, that made it to the first reading. Uh, and I did state that one of the purposes of this is to alleviate as best we can, uh, large one-time increases. Um, the objective of this also is to help the food service program remain self-supporting, go back, going back to our statement of the fund balance policy, so that it doesn't run into a deficit and the operating budget is then being required to pick up X dollars, whatever, whatever X dollars is.
Any questions?
Does this do anything to help us to guard against the federal government shoving down our throat mandatory increases, so that our middle-class students can no longer afford lunches?
No, because one of the guidelines, they said that it would follow all federal laws. So at the moment, um, unless the CPI for foods away from home drastically changes, regardless of the next discussion coming up, uh, we're looking at a nickel increase until we hit, we hit $2.42.
So if we built into this somehow local control and that the board would be able to make the decision on, um, what lunch prices should be, um, we would still be threatened with losing our federal funding if we didn't raise our prices.
That's correct.
Yes. That's why there's a statement that says it would follow all federal and state laws.
I'm just, I'm looking for a way around that.
I understand that.
Unfortunately, there is none at this point.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion on policy EFBB?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, motion by Ron, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed. Need to find a problem, a solution to that problem.
That's four to one. Thanks very much.
While Nancy is setting up. Steve?
Oh, thank you, sorry.
Quiet.
How much are they?
Depends on who you ask.
I can tell you they are not nutrient-dense, so they're actually taste good.
Oh, terrific. No nutrients.
Oh, that was bad.
That look good.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. We have to enjoy you, so I don't know.
All right, while we're passing out the cookies, let me set up some, some guidelines on the present, before the presentation. The presentation that we're about to have is, is broken into three parts. Section one, we will talk about how we're gonna end fiscal year 11, mainly financially. The second section is the impact and the effect of the new Child Intuition Act, which Nancy will get into. And the third will be financial stability of the food service program, really from FY12 to, to 16. In regard to the new law, you touched that, and you break this.
I was gonna get my hands open.
You minor. In regard to the new law, as I stated in my memo, we continue to receive updated information in regard to interpretations and procedures of, of the new law. Just the other day, we learned that the law pertains only to foods purchased through the food service program. So what that means, for example, is the vending machines that we all thought were gonna go food service program, and the school lunch program, and then, I'm sorry, the, the school store, those revenues stay where they are now. However, they, too, must abide by the nutritional restrictions of the foods being, um, given to the, given to the students during, during the day. So, long are the days of candy and snacks in the school store, I think.
They sell carrots and celery?
Yep.
They can.
We know that the financial issues, i.e. Steve's pricing, uh, policy, does take effect FY12, meaning in a couple of months, July, moving forward. However, the restrictions, or all the restrictions of the nutritional piece that Nancy will get into, all don't hit the books until FY13. And that was because the, um, Food Service Association and the vendors who do a lot of business with the food service and the lunch in schools begged Congress for a year to get everything, to get everything changed and, and have time to adjust all the changes. Now, we have already started some of the changes in the menu. We'll be doing more in FY12, so that when FY13 comes, we're all set, and it's not a whole menu change in FY13 when the kids walk in the door September 12, September 2012. Many of the questions that we've asked, and probably many of the questions that you might have during the presentation, we don't have the answers for. Um, like any sweeping law, slowly but surely, um, interpretations and procedures are coming out as to what the law meant when it's, this statement says this. Um, any, any questions you have, we have the answers, we'll certainly give it to you. Any questions you don't have, we'll take it down, and when, when we find the answer, we'll give, we'll get to you. We, between Nancy and I, we probably have a dozen open questions that were sent asking for interpretations, uh, and haven't done back yet, because they haven't been disseminated to everybody yet. I mean, for example, like, like I said, on Friday, we got, uh, the word that it only pertains to food service program, so the vending machines and the school store are not part of the program, which we all thought six, six months ago. And then, uh, after that, we will present data that we feel justifies a price increase, price increase to FY12 and subsequent years. We know we're gonna go through a lot of information, both on finance, numbers, projections, scenarios, and I have about four or five scenarios I'll pass out on pricing. and I have about four or five scenarios I'll pass out on pricing, you gotta, you feel for, it wasn't just one. So therefore, we're not gonna ask for a decision tonight on the price increase. We'll come back, the following meeting, which is in two weeks, that will give the board, we feel, time to go through it, call us up, call up DOE, or whoever, or, you know, online research. And then hopefully, by the time you go through the, any questions you have in the packet, you'll be ready to make a decision of some kind in the next board meeting.
I assume you'll be able to answer questions from the public at the next board meeting, too, if people wanna come in and ask?
And I, and I mean that, because, like I said, we got about a dozen questions that we'll get back to you on, so to speak. So, certainly, I think we got questions we'll have tonight that we don't have answers, we'll try to get, we'll try to get the answers for you.
Yeah, I mostly wanna put out there that there will be an opportunity for concerned people to come in and ask questions.
Our recommendation, just to be clear upfront, our recommendation is for 25 cent increase, starting FY12, which would be this coming September, and a nickel for the next four years. Now, those of you US who are in capital improvement planning, and go and do the, you know, long-range projections, we know that when you get to year five and six, it starts to get fuzzy. But I put it out there as a five-year plan to follow all the other plans we do. So, we're really looking at next year, and maybe the year after, and then, obviously, as, as we just adopted the first reading, each year, we'll take a look at the pricing, the finances, and determine if the pricing is appropriate, whether it goes up or even come down. So, that's what we're gonna be doing for the next few minutes, or maybe a little longer than a few minutes. Okay. For FY11, our projected daily sales is less than forecasted, and that's mainly at high school and middle school, okay? When we were back here a year ago, May 2010, it's probably all or nothing.
Leave it.
That's right. When we were back here in May 2010.
It was not the outstanding audiovisual.
We had forecasted a number of meals to be served, around 611,000, we're at 525. The budget, I believe, is about a million one, and we'll show you in a minute when we did this a year, when we did this back in the budget time. Our revenue now for FY11 is 940,000. Repairs are slightly higher than we budgeted, and that's really due to one medium-sized project. We had an emergency repair of the grease trap at Matthew Thornton, that involved a little bit more than you wanna get into, but it wasn't $10,000 either. Food costs are lower than budgeted, we'll show you in a minute, but not, but not a one-to-one ratio from the budget of sales to, to the actuals. And so we are projecting a loss of, annual loss of just over $87,000 for FY11. Hopefully this works, 'cause it worked before. Here's what we have, is what was the budget for sales and revenues, and then, to the right, is our projected year-end. And you see that the difference, the big difference, obviously, is at first, that top line, daily food sales from a million fifty to 940. If you go down, labor and benefits and whatever, we're pretty much even. Cleaning, equipment, again, that's the, that, that project at Matthew Thornton. Supplies are about the same. Again, as I mentioned, food costs drop, obviously, when you have less meals. The food service, food costs should drop, and they did. Milk drops significantly, and that's a government commodity, so depending on, on the government's pricing, as, as well, how we get the milk, we could go as high as 91, which we did, to a low of like, high 60s. And equipment was based on the capital improvement plan. In FY11, we did the serving line at North, North School. And there's the 87,161. What that does for her, or for the program, I should say, is put her, put, put the program unreserved fund balance right at the $35,000 limit, which we have, until the new fund balance policy is passed. Now, back in May of, of last year, we told the board that we projected a $75,000 loss. If you remember back then, the economy wasn't too strong, and we were asked, could we get by one more year without a price increase to help the, the parents of Londonderry, or the students attending school without a, a lunch increase, when everything else is hitting them? And we, we said we could, and we did, and we did with the fact that we still didn't go below the, I'll use the phrase, financial stability line. But unfortunately, as we'll get into a little while, I think those days are done. Remind the board, it's been six years for a price increase. In that six years, the program has renovated North School Kitchen, South School Kitchen, five dishwashers have been replaced, and then, starting in FY11, doesn't show 10, because through the lease process, we'll be picking up three years of, of a lease payment for the high school refrigerator. Questions on this section, as we begin to close FY11, and the impact of FY11?
Just one, how many meals were served this year?
We, we expect, 'cause we took a few, you know, 525, which is...
So, that comes up to a loss of, in the neighborhood of 20 cents per meal?
No, it's higher than that.
It's higher than that.
It is?
Yeah.
All right, thanks. I think that's it.
All right, so what I'm gonna talk about is the effects of the new act on our meals. And we know that research studies have shown that healthier kids are more likely to succeed in school, behave better, and have a risk, reduced risk of a multitude of chronic diseases. We also know that by making healthy choice, choices the easy choice, that healthy behaviors soon become the norm. The Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act of 2010 pushes school meal programs to make healthy choices the only choices available in the lunch line.
In your packet, we gave you a summary of the new law. Anybody who wants, we have the website for the summary, if you need that, or we can give you the link to the, the exact law, and we actually got a copy of the, whatever page it is. So, we tried to give you a summary, you gotta go through some of the things that Nancy's gonna touch on, as she goes through her piece.
My interpretation of this law is that we're being mandated by the federal government to provide meals that are low in sodium, low in fat, less processed, more homemade, and incorporate more fresh fruits and vegetables than were available in the 1950s. So, what is changing about the program? On the left side of this screen is what we currently do, and the meal pattern is to provide two ounces of meat or meat alternative, two to three servings of bread or grain, one cup of fruit or vegetable, and one cup of fruit fluid milk. The new plan, and, and the student must select three out of these five components in order for us to receive our reimbursement. The proposed new requirements, is the meat, the meat requirement is the same. The bread requirement is the same, except that it must be whole grain. And the vegetable, the vegetable and fruit have been broken out into two separate components. And for the high school students, it has been doubled in size, serve, and we must serve one cup of fruit, one cup of vegetable, and one cup of fluid milk. And in order for us to receive our reimbursement, the student must choose four out of the five components. We also are required to have water available for drinking, at no charge to the student.
In the kitchen, in the cafeteria.
The sodium levels have benchmarks for every two years, and must be reduced, and I'll show you those levels in the next slide. Saturated fat can be no more than 10 grams, and trans fats must be zero.
One of the things I wanna point out, and sometimes it gets overlooked, today, the students must choose three of the five components. Going, starting next year, or actually FY13, they must choose four of the five components. So, it's more food that needs to be put out for, for them to choose. Whether they eat it or not, doesn't matter. We must have it, so that they must choose, take, whatever, four of the five components to qualify as a...
It has to be on their tray when they go past the cashier.
To qualify as a...
Reimbursable meal.
Any, any questions as we're going through?
So, choose, choose means they have the option not to take it, and if they don't take it, then they don't qualify.
Well, they're not gonna have many options. Or if they do, I lose my reimbursement, which means I really can't sell that lunch for the same price that they're getting it for.
So, they can choose option A or option A?
Pretty much.
Now, before, before you move on, I just wanna make sure of one thing. The net result, at minimum, in the new requirement, is that we have to serve at least a quarter cup more of vegetables.
Yeah, you'll see that in detail in a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Go to the next.
But I didn't wanna say one thing, we have to have free water in, in the cafeterias.
Is that bottled water, or...
Can be...
It just, just has to be available, it can be a drinking fountain, it can be...
Bottled water.
Pictures of water on the tables, it can be...
Bucket with a ladle?
Pretty much.
But it has to, if you have, it has to be available. And if you have a ladle, you have to have the cups with the ladle, if you know that way.
What about some type of dispensary unit?
Yeah.
We don't have any of those, so...
Couple of the kid, I think, couple of the cafeterias do have water bubbles, so we're gonna look at how to handle the ones that don't have any water bubbles in it.
Okay, this slide is a little more graphic, and it breaks it down by grades, so that you can see how the increments change. And I, there's a couple of things I wanna point out, and that is, well, the serving size for the high school grade has doubled, to one cup of fruit and one cup of vegetable. And when we're talking about fresh fruit, we're talking about a definite increase in price. The grains must be whole grains within two years. Milk, we are, will no longer be allowed to serve milk that is more than 1%. And if we serve flavored milk, is, must be skimmed flavored milk. There is a calorie restriction, which it cannot exceed, but there is no minimum. I guess there is a minimum. Saturated fat, less than 10, which we're meeting now, I believe. Sodium, the sodium levels are extremely low. They are approximately 1/3 of a teaspoon. And when you think about, a glass of milk has 120 milligrams of sodium in it, and then, your sodium for cold cuts, the reduced cal, the reduced sodium cold cuts cost about double what regular cold cuts cost. So, that price is going to impact our, our meals as well. Trans fats are zero, and I believe, we're probably 99% zero trans fat at this point, anyway. So, that's not quite the same impact as some of the other items. Yes?
The caloric content that we're talking about, right here?
Yes.
Broken down by ages?
Yes.
These are not, is, this is per meal?
Per meal, yes, per lunch. This is for lunches. We have one for breakfast also, but we only serve breakfast at the high schools, so...
Okay, and I had a question on the, the last slide, which was, does this sound like we're moving more toward à la carte menus?
No?
No, okay.
Any questions on this one?
What's this, the daily recommended caloric intake based off of 2000?
The, the recommended from the Institute of Medicine.
What, what are they basing?
Thirty percent of their recommendations. In this slide, I wanted to show the difference between a chicken tender, a nutri, the nutritional information between a chicken tender that we're using this year versus chicken tender that we used last year and years past. And you'll note the lower calories, less calories from fat, less saturated fat, less grams of fat, less sodium, more protein. The chicken tender that we used previously was a processed food with soy added. The product that we're using this year is basically chicken cut into proper pieces, and then breaded for our needs, but the cost per serving is considerably higher.
What we wanted to do was just show one example of one of the more popular products, give an idea of not only the nutritional changes, but this one item almost doubles in price, actually, more than doubles in price, because of all the nutritional changes that are required, so there will be no effect.
This slide, it shows, demonstrates the, now, this is our food cost only, and you can see what a menu item of chicken tenders cost in 2010 versus what it cost us in 2011. And keeping in mind that there is no labor cost involved in this meal.
Now, this is, this is today's cost or projected for next year?
No, this is today's cost.
Which, chicken with, with serving meats, the guidelines make.
Right, definitely.
Sure.
And so do the fresh vegetables, and, you know, we're, the government is looking for more fresh fruits and vegetables on these menus, and we're looking to provide that.
Do you have a file on cost per meal, Peter?
Yeah.
It's in the next slide. Here, we're showing how the cost, the cost per meal has grown since 2009, to 16, to 18, to 55, and what we're projecting for 2013. And I just wanted to note that this year, I've spent 15, six more on improved chicken products. And when I was speaking of the low-sodium cold cuts, now, we don't go through that much roast beef, but it will cost us, to, to serve the same amount of roast beef as a low-sodium item will cost us an additional $1,000, and ham, reduced sodium and fat, will cost us an additional $8,000 a year.
Almost an oxymoron.
Right. The other changes we have are that these food safety requirements that are imposed on us will be, will be imposed on all areas of the school that are, that are, where food is stored and served. And also, the federal government has promised us an additional 6 cents per meal if we are certified. if we are certified, to be in compliance with the final meal pattern. And that six cents, we're going to have to be in compliance for several years before we see any of that six cents. So it's, we probably won't see that until fourteen or fifteen.
That's called a long-term carrot.
It is a long-term carrot. The first two, we've ruled that, we've already talked about, so I just want to go to the next slide. Our sodium levels have to be reduced to these levels with two-year benchmarks. And that there will be standards established for all foods sold and available for sale during the school day. These food standards will be applicable to the school store and any vending machines that the students have access to during the school day. And there will, but there will be allowances for infrequent school-sponsored food fundraisers. And again, a ruling on this will come. What the definition of infrequent is will be coming in the law in September. Also, the school must provide nutrition education, but I believe we do some of that already. Now we get to the equity in meal pricing.
Yes.
Can you go back to the last slide?
Yeah.
Now, how does that second one is allowance made for infrequent school-sponsored food fundraisers? Or let's go, how does this affect football games?
It's just, everything we're talking about is during school day, in the buildings.
Okay, so nothing like that?
Can you grab a mic? Can you grab a mic?
So, to answer your question, any foods or drinks sold outside the buildings, certainly anything sold during off-school hours, like after school events, are not under this law?
Once that bell rings at 1:58, it's anybody's game.
Okay, and what about, you know, inevitably I go into any school and there's a bake sale, donut sale.
That's the word.
We're waiting for, we're waiting for regulation clarification on that point. But they will, those foods will come into, if they're frequent, they will be subject to the same standards that I am subject to for my meals.
So that's the idea, Ron, infrequent school-sponsored fundraisers. Where, that's one of the questions we've asked.
How frequent is infrequent?
In what standards? In other words, will they require exactly everything we have, or will they back off for, well, for the fundraisers? We don't have that, we hope they have it before school opens. But you're right, the bake sales or whatever for the clubs and events may be affected on what they can provide.
Popcorn? They do popcorn sales?
They do do popcorn sales, but I don't know, they may actually be okay.
You ever had low-sodium popcorn?
Well, yes, I have. Just like cardboard.
You know, Christmas-type things, Christmas cookies.
Infrequent.
That's infrequent.
That's all.
Infrequent's easy to define. It's about how often we get cookies on the school board.
Whoa. But, 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 all kidding aside, that's what we're trying to find out what an infrequent is.
That's right, once, three times a year.
But you can see where during Christmas time and what have you, the candy.
Right, right. I think they're wrestling with the, or I hope they're wrestling with the idea of taking all the fight out of schools when...
You know, actually, that raises an interesting point. All foods sold in schools during the school day, is there any differentiation for whether it's meant to be consumed in school? I mean, for example, the friends of music pizza dough.
If it's sold in the building...
I would not consider that to be part, subject to the...
So you could still have pie sales, things like that?
As long as they're not sold during the school day.
Right.
Well, I mean, if they are sold promoted at least to students during the school...
But those things are picked up after school.
Right, right.
They are picked up after school, they've got pre-orders, they're picked up after school.
So you do think those would be safe? Okay, good.
But if they want to sell it during the cafeteria, during lunchtime?
To be eaten, though.
Ice cream? Ice cream will be subject to these standards. We're going to be taking a real hard look at that this summer.
More kids will bring their own lunch. Don't have to worry about it.
At least their own dessert.
The equity in meal pricing. This requires us to gradually raise our price to meet what the federal government is providing for the program for a free lunch. Now, currently, we receive $2.72 for every free meal. A paid lunch, by definition, is considered to be any lunch that is not free or reduced. Now, the federal government reimburses us 26 cents for every paid lunch. So when you subtract the 26 cents from the 2.72, you get $2.46. So according to the Healthy Hungry Kids Act of 2010, we must be gradually raising our school meal price to be $2.46 per meal.
Now, obviously, obviously, over time, that number could change. But today...
Penny here, penny there.
The target is 2.46.
So we get 2.72 now for...
A free meal.
For a free meal, and that costs us how much to serve?
2.55.
The formula for raising the price is to take 2% of your current meal price plus add the percent change in the Consumer Price Index for meals served away from home. If you want to go to the next slide.
Are we all okay with that?
Yep. And this is, Peter prepared this slide for the Consumer Price Index for meals served away from home for the past several years.
What I did here was, as we were starting to formulate where we are with our pricing, I just wanted to see, if we started at 1.50, and we just followed the formula, where would we end up?
Question. On the previous slide, 2.72, I'm assuming that's not a loaded price, right? That's just the cost of the meal.
That's the price we get.
That's what I'm, our program is reimbursed for every free lunch that we provide.
Right, but when I compare it against what our costs are for the meal, we can only, we don't even factor in what the meal costs, not what the loading costs are.
What's a loaded cost?
Loaded, alright, so, you know...
The equipment and employees and...
The employees and having loaded costs.
Yes.
So I can, that would go against the loaded cost number.
Well, it doesn't matter, for the 2.72, it doesn't matter what our costs are. Our cost per meal could be a dollar, for all we know. The federal government will give us, when she sends to the state of feds that we had 100 free lunches, free lunches served this month, they give us 2.72 times 100.
The reason why I'm asking this is because if you're talking about bringing the price up to meet what the government wants, the question becomes, is it a meal cost or is it a loaded cost?
It's a loaded cost.
Loaded cost, okay, in that case, it's the cost of the program, labor benefits and food.
So essentially, we're turning a 12-cent profit on every...
No.
No, we're not, no.
We're turning it, no, we're turning on every, that's the problem, I'm sorry, but that's the problem the government has. Is we're turning a hell of a profit because we're charging a dollar fifty, they're giving us 2.72, and we're pocketing the difference. And that dollar fifty is a loaded cost, that's our equipment, that's our labor, that's our food. And the government's irritated that we aren't charging as much as they're giving us.
The cost of the meal right now in 2011 is 2.55.
Yes.
Right, what's the loaded cost of the 2.55? It's three something, right?
No, the...
2.55, I think, is the loaded cost. That's not just the cost of the...
The loaded cost is 2.55, so we are making other...
Yeah, we're getting an 18-cent profit.
You're saying the cost of the proposed meal is 3.32. The cost of your proposed meal is 3.32.
Right.
Well, FY13, when all the official guidance hit us.
But you're working your way there already, so there's a pretty good chance that you're going to be above and beyond that.
Well, like, yes, no. Do you have it? Should we put it back?
Nope.
What if the cost of our meal, if you go to the slide where it shows in 2010 versus 2011?
Nine, 10, 11, and then I'm looking at the cost of proposed meal, 3.32.
What I'm saying is if you look at the comparison menus, it's not the loaded cost is the cost for the food, it's a dollar sixty-two with all the new stuff in 2011.
And that's the only slide where we're not showing the, we're only showing some cost on that slide.
Yeah, but I would not expect that our loaded cost would be 3.32, we're saying labor and everything else is two bucks on a meal.
That's what they're saying.
But FY10, on FY10...
That would be, that would be interesting if our costs are doubled a meal.
Hold on, FY10, which is the last audited, well, last completed year, okay? Our cost per meal, okay, loaded costs, labor, benefits, food, whatever, $2.18 against, when you factor in the cost, and then we serve 611 meals.
611...
Thousand.
Thousand meals.
Okay, our revenue per meal was $2.16. Again, take the total revenues we brought in, divide it by the 611K.
Okay.
Okay, FY11, with 525,000 meals, our cost per meal goes from 2.18 to 2.55.
Because the overhead remains the same arises and the number of units sold goes down.
Yes.
Right.
But your cost of meals is still 1.62?
No, the cost per meal is 2.55. You've taken all the labor, food, and divided through the number of units that you're producing.
I guess, Peter, what we'd like to see is the breakdown, the years that I would like to see, the breakdown of the meals, what your labor cost is around it. So we have the two different numbers that make up the cost for those couple of years.
Is that, do you have that spreadsheet?
Right, because right now, in 2011, you're on 1.62 with a cost of 2.55.
1.62 for the raw materials, call it.
This, I believe, FY10, am I right?
Yep.
Okay, 611 meals served, they are the revenues, and you divide it through, you get 2.16.
What is that number?
That's, that's a million, 1,320,000 divided by 611,000 meals.
Loaded, or...
That's just revenue.
That's just revenue.
That's revenue.
We brought in on average $2.16 a meal.
But that's not the course, that's not the course.
I'm not there yet. You take costs of a million, 330,500, right here, right? Divided by 611,000 meals is $2.18. So in FY12, we lost two cents a meal. Now, that component is so many meals from the federal government at a free price of 2... 2.46?
2.72.
2.72, there's a price for reduced, there's the standard cost per meal for lunch at the high school, middle school, and then there's the standard cost, the standard price at the elementaries. You've got alacard, you've got kids taking seconds, and you've got faculty buying meals. So all those units come into $2.18 cost per meal versus a revenue per meal of 2.16. What we're saying in 2011 is we project 525,000 meals. So we have 2.39 of an average revenue per meal or per unit versus an average cost of 2.55, so we're losing 17 cents. 17 cents times whatever gets you the 87,000 whatever dollars.
What I, can I, I'd like to see this slide broken down a little bit differently. What's the cost of, what we got for the meals, what's the cost of the food, what's the cost of the labor, what's the cost of the incidentals? I'd like to see the three components that make up how we charge the meal. What's the food part of it, what's the labor part of it, and what's that? I would like to see that broken up, not in numbers, but in per-meal basis.
Well, I can, I mean, I can do the two of them quickly.
No, I'd like, we'll discuss this next week.
Like a pie chart of...
Yeah, I'd like to see it, I'd like to see the graph in my hand, something like that.
I think the question is, we'd like to understand what the additional dollar and change per meal is actually going to, or what's driving that figure.
What makes up the cost of the meal? Right, and where is the increase going to be over the next year or so?
We'll get to that, we'll get to that in a little while. Okay.
Anybody want another cookie?
It's $2.16.
Yeah, but we get 2.75 back from the feds, so...
But it's infrequent.
150 calories left.
Okay, okay, with that, questions on the law, what's going forward?
As long as you're asking questions on the law, you're up here. I just wanted to reiterate a few points. You use some very specific terms. The student must select. The student must choose. We must serve. We didn't have in there any force feeding. So, and this might be a question for Chuck, and this is actually a serious question. Do we have a compost plan at our high school, middle school, and elementary schools? No, and I'm serious. We have a great recycling effort in our schools. And we probably ought to have, based on this legislation, a composting plan. Serious. I just don't see the students, we know they throw food away today. And it's, there's nothing that says they have to eat it. And in regards to the sodium, it sounded awful lot like no child left behind. Eventually, you won't be able to get to the point where you're successful.
Right.
Or the cost will be so high.
It's too low, food won't taste like anything, and it won't be our fault.
No, and you mentioned milk, and milk, it isn't, you know, the cows are putting the sodium in, it's not like they're salting it off.
Okay. Section three, we start talking about a proposal for pricing increases, and we start talking about the financial state of affairs moving forward. I passed out, because I don't trust my macros too well, although I think I did all right, passed out on the sheets. I mentioned earlier, when we looked at pricing, we looked at a few things, and we'll get to in a few minutes. But we looked at four or five scenarios, and we'll get to in a little while. It wasn't just 25 cents and a nickel, and then that's all we did. To reiterate a couple of things, our last increase was six years ago, as we mentioned. The Food Service Department has picked up, have picked up, remember, the all-employee benefits... The food service department has picked up a fair amount, have picked up, remember, the, all the employee benefits a couple of years ago? That includes, I think, there's three people on, on health. During the past few years, the program has renovated the kitchen at North, renovated the kitchen at South, five dishwashers that I forgot to put in there, the high school freezer. All the while, maintained fiscal sustainability, and even, even at the end of this year, we project the program will still be above the bar of, of the financial stability line. We wanted to go out and say, okay, we know we need a price increase, we think we know what we want, but just checking, let's see where we are, or how we're gonna sit with our counterparts in the class L area. So, I had my assistant spend a couple of hours, and there's actually two slides in the survey. We asked the class Ls, if you had a price increase since two thou- since school year two thousand four. If yes, how many current lunch price, current lunch price at the elementaries, current lunch price at the high school and middle school? And there, and there are the results. If you take out lunch area for second, you'll come to that the average price is two dollars for the, for the, um, high school, and I think it's a dollar eighty for the, for the middle school. And that doesn't mean we're gonna jump to two dollars, whatever, but we also wanna see, where are we with our pricing? Are we real low, are we high? I mean, we could've found ourselves higher than, than, than we thought, and so now, we've got another problem to look at. But these are the results, and I think, I don't think we've left any class Ls out. And we use class Ls mainly because they're the same size as us, they get the same problem as us. I didn't wanna get a school that only has four hundred kids in the, in the, in the building. I wanted to try to keep it as comparable as, as we possibly can. And then the second piece is, if you anticipate a price increase within the next few years, the maybes are because of the law. The question mark is for us. Couple of the people like Dover Exo said, no, and they said, well, maybe. And they're all making money or at least breaking even. And then we're not, I, I had to put, we're not for, for two, FY eleven. But I use this as a guide, this is not like, okay, I guess I can go up to two dollars, whatever. Before I do anything, I wanna see where we are with, with all our counterparts. Here is, um, the meals from FY four to eleven. FY four, we had just under five hundred, four hundred ninety-six, eight ninety-five. We went up to six thirty-three, four eighteen, six thirty-six, nine five five. We peaked two thousand seven, seven hundred and seventeen, eight six nine. And then, as we've, we know, enrollment, starting the slide, so do our meal counts. We dropped six seventy, six eighteen, six eleven, and we're projecting for FY eleven, five hundred and twenty-five. So, obviously, they play a role in when you cost out the cost per meal. We made, we, I think we made an eight cents, if I remember my, my, my numbers, eight cents a meal at the peak of two thousand seven. If you, for those who were here in two thousand four, the menu options that were given to the students were, shall we say, limited. And when, when Nancy came on board, one of the, one of the major things I, I asked during the interview process was, uh, what type of meals and menus to provide, because I was looking for a little more variety. I was hoping the students were, in the first few years, I think wore out with the meal count skyrocketing as they did.
Can we go back to this slide for a second?
Yep.
I, I guess, I look at the numbers and the part that I see that strikes me significantly is that we're looking at almost dropping, what, eighty thousand meals?
This year.
This year. Why, I, I mean, I mean, why are we looking at dropping that many this year? Population didn't decrease that much in this one year to make that type of difference.
Uh, no, some of it's enrollment, and some of it I'll, I'll, I'll use as outside factors, uh, that are, uh, students are, are finding on the choices in the building, so then they go to school, not to go there.
Hey, so, if we keep going down the path of going, will we see that number even decrease even further?
Uh, well, when we get into the sheets that I passed out, the sov- the board, the public is aware, what I did was, because it's the best information I have, if you remember the, the long sheet that the superintendent passed out, giving you enrollment projections for the next several years, when we did, when we did, when they did FY twelve budget. I used those projections in the elementary schools, and the middle school, and high school. Used the same meal count ratio. I believe the high school was forty-nine, and the elementary was sixty-one. So, we used those ratios, and then projected out meal counts based on flat enrollment, not that flat, based on enrollment that was in, in the sheets. I didn't change the, um, ratio or anything like that, I kept it flat. So, the meal counts do go down each year. Um, and that's, when we get to the pricing recommendation, is, is one of the factors in, 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 in a recommendation. Obviously, less meal counts means less revenue per meal, per, per price. The new law requires, as Nancy said, high nutritional value, which leads to higher food costs. The current cost of labor for the Leonard School Food Service is below our class L counterparts. Majority of them, uh, the staff is, um, um, uni- is unionized, many, and many of them have, many of the percented, much, much higher percentage of staff have, uh, benefits associated with, with their labor costs. Our current meal price is thirty cents below the next low district, which was Salem at a dollar eighty for the high school, I didn't remember. And without pricing, without a price adjustment, the food service program can't maintain its self-supporting status. But I didn't, and I don't mean, uh, um, below the bench meal, below that retained surplus. I mean, staying in the, in the red, uh, black altogether. Um, and without any price increase, the, the school board has a decision to make, whether you want the program to remain self-supporting, self-sufficient, or whether you want the district to pick up X percent or a dollar value each year of the, of the, of the program. You, you can do that, um, uh, but as I, as my, the last bullet says, um, you cannot, um, use future price increases to cover a current deficit. If you remember back in FY ten, the program had a small deficit, it was like nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
About ten thousand dollars.
I had to write, I had to writ- write, um, a plan to the Department of Education as to how we're gonna cover the nine thousand eight hundred dollars. And to be truthful, I said, well, when I'm looking at a hundred thousand dollar unreserved fund balance, I'm, I think I'm fine. Okay, now that we drop to eighty-seven thousand, I'm, I'm probably gonna have a little more of a memo to write. If the, if the food service program goes into a deficit, the operating, the general fund has to cover the deficit the same year. So, just make an example, if we were to go into the red, thousand dollars this year, and with no other way of, of making up the money, the, the general fund would have to transfer a thousand dollars out of the program. No different than any other federal grant. You take, let's, let's take IDA, for example. If the IDA grants a million dollars, and we spend a million one hundred thousand, we would, we would either move a hundred thousand in the general fund, or transfer a hundred thousand dollars of appropriations to the grant, one way or another. One way or another, the, the, the general fund covers the money. So, we, they cannot run a deficit, uh, uh, at, from one, at the end of the year, it has to be made up somewhere.
Uh, Peter, quick question on, as we saw those numbers on the last slide, as, as they're declining, is there a ratio like we have with teachers to students and aides to students, where we get to a certain threshold of meals served, that we're actually looking at reducing headcount for staff?
I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I got that one.
We look at that, you know, we actually look at that constantly, and because we're divided by so many buildings and so many positions in order to make the lunch line go and be successful, it's very difficult to knock down a person. We, this year, because we, uh, reduced in lunch period at the middle school, we were able to, you know, reduce people's hours, uh, a little bit here and there. So, mainly, that's what we look at, is what can we do, where are, are, where are we overstaffed, and is it possible for us to survive during our day and get everything done with the reduction in staffing?
Mr. Campbell has raised the issue a couple of times with us about, have we looked at, or did we look at reducing lunch periods? And his specific, his specific, uh, area was the elementaries, because that's obviously where the most of the enrollment, enrollment is dropping. Um, and we had several conversations, we meaning the superintendent, myself, Andy Corey, and the principals. And the consensus is, and St. Greenberg can chime in on the time. This coming year would be difficult to cut lunch periods, either the middle school or the elementary school. FY thirteen, however, seems to be opportunity where the lunch period at the middle school, and possibly one or two lunch periods at the elementary schools would be reduced. And in my projections for labor, I did the best I could to, to reflect a, a possible drop of one or two lunch periods in the FY thirteen, uh, labor dollars, dollars for labor.
To address your issue, and the elementary principals are here too. You, the question is not so much number of lunch periods, as I went back through it. It's the amount of time that it takes for the kids to get through. So, right now, there are twenty-five minute, at the elementary level, there are twenty-five minute lunch periods to usher the kids through. Um, if you reduce the number of lunch periods, and let's, and look at the number of kids that would be going, what, in a, you may reduce it to from four to three, or five to four, but the amount of time it would take to serve the kids, and the amount of time it would take them to eat, would not be substantially different. Therefore, the amount of time that you would need the laborers there, or the people there, would not change substantially. So, that, that's one issue we're looking at. So, part of it is the aggregate number of, of people that have to go through, and the amount of time. So, I think we have to look at it more at time, as opposed to number of sections. The number of lunch periods, if you will, to, to some degree, are dictated by the academic program and specials involved, and also space within the school, whether it's the cafeteria or what have you. One of our schools has a rolling cafeteria, uh, lunch where the kid, where there's some overlap. The other part that we have to take into consideration is recess periods and duty. The other thing, and I didn't think of it until later this afternoon, was with the younger kids, um, I guess, let me put it this way, have you ever watched the first grader go through a lunch line? Um, it takes a fair amount of time for them to win their way through. So, part of looking at, and Ron's point is valid with the number of kids. So, I think it's not so much periods, it's how much time does it take to run us through? Um, the lunch periods at the elementary level are twenty-five minutes, for the kids to go through the, the lunch line, s- sit down, and, um, now ignore four out of the three choices as opposed, uh, three out of the four choices as opposed to only two out of the three, uh, whatever the case may be. So, I think one of the things we're certainly gonna look at is the amount of time, and I think that's it. So, it's not so much the number of periods, it's total amount of time, I think, that it takes to go through. I think that'd be a fair assessment.
I guess my point is that we have the same number of lunch times for the same period of time, when we had a thousand fifty kids at Matthew Thornton, eight hundred and fifty at South School, and seven hundred at North School. So, that's what I'm looking at, the amount of time per child. We haven't changed substantially any of those numbers of the, the part, and that, that's the part I think I'd like to see the evaluation on. And over at the middle school, I'm thinking is, as this population goes down, the auxiliary cafeteria is the part that I would be looking at closing down.
Absolutely.
So, those, that's what I'm looking at, is, you know, we had those numbers in the school, we put them through the lunch periods at that period of time, so we haven't made a whole bunch of changes in the lunch period, but our population has significantly decreased by twenty to twenty-five classrooms down at the elementary level. That is the part that I-
Didn't make one change, but we went back and asked, uh, Principal Carol Mack about a thousand kids at Matthew Thornton, if you remember, and I remember, I probably had kids at the, at the school. The lunch periods then were being held in the gym, not, not in the cafeteria.
That's correct.
So, you had more students being able to be served in the gym, and I believe you had more labor because you had rolling carts going in there, so.
Again, that's the evaluation I'd like to see done. I mean, that, that's, because you're gonna do something, if you don't do something, we'll keep doing what we're doing. My projection is that lunching is, the meals are gonna continue to go down, the labor cost is gonna continue to rise, and the meals are just gonna become unaffordable, and more and more people bring lunches to, to feed into this whole process.
But your labor ratio is gonna go up.
Okay, this next slide, just kind of a summary of what we've gone through. I passed out earlier, the spreadsheet that has, I think, four, and there are copies of anybody wants them. Four scenarios, and we went through the scenarios quickly. And the scenarios are just on revenue, just different pricing scenarios with, um, all the other revenues being, being, um, being, uh, the same, and the cost of, of, of labor being the same. The first page you have in front of you, which is S two, twenty-five nickel, nickel, nickel. That's our recommendation, which is a twenty-five cent increase for FY twelve, and then five cents for the next four years. Five cents is by law, and if you go back to the formula we talked about, two cents of your meals, plus the CPI of, um, food away from home, rounded to the nearest nickel, gives you a nickel. So, the twenty-five cents is a joke to kind of catch up maybe a couple of years, and then five cents a meal on end. And what you see is, you, uh, avoid a deficit for twelve, thirteen, fourteen, start to run into the red a little bit in fifteen, and then sixteen, and by then, fifteen and sixteen, as I say, the numbers get fuzzy enough. And if the meal policy goes through, we would be evaluating the lunch price anyways on an annual basis. But when I'm looking at this for tonight, I'm looking at twelve, maybe thirteen. And staying out of the red, staying out of the, staying above the threat, the financial threshold for the, for those two years. If you turn the page, where it says twenty-ten, five-five-five, that's a twenty cent increase the first year, ten cent increase the second year, and the nickels remaining years. Similar numbers, but because as I go back, the FY twelve meal counts are higher than thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. You see the revenue, you see the, the extra revenue generated from that five cents to, uh, to the number, the larger meal count. And that revenue flows through and provides you, uh, more revenue for the years. You remember, the first page, if you go to the, if you, everything comes in perfect, the program goes in the red by fifty-five dollars, and then in this scenario, we'll live over twenty-one thousand, if the numbers all came through the same. Okay, then I looked at, Mr. Campbell has, has, has always told me, he'd love to keep increases level. So, I looked at ten cents each of the next five years. And what, what happens here is, the ten cents times the meal counts for FY twelve doesn't, doesn't, doesn't keep the program out of the red. And in fact, um, and Ron Colby had said, try fifteen, I think it was ten-ten. And not even thinking, I, I ran it, and I realized, the twenty cents is the threshold, I ran fifteen a couple of times. Twenty cents is the threshold to keep FY twelve from being in a, a deficit position. And then, of course, for law, if you wanna stick with the law, and run nickels for the next five years, you see the, you see the, the numbers and the, and the position the program is in. If you strictly just follow the law and add in five cents, um, through the years. Now, obviously, these are trends, these are based on our best estimates of labor, food costs. If you see, on food costs, for FY eleven, we expect food to be six hundred thousand. We expect it to be somewhere around six-twenty, even though meal counts will die a little bit, because we're really kicking in the nutritional items. And then it goes to six fifty-one, where by law, we have to become a hundred percent compliant with the nutritional standards that we talked about.
Excuse me, Peter, um, your statement that twenty cents-
Your statement that twenty cents is the threshold for keeping FY twelve out of the red.
Yes.
Appears to hold true only if we spend forty thousand, two hundred dollars on equipment that year.
Yes, we're going to get into CIP in a minute.
Okay. But if we were to not spend on equipment that year, then Ron's pricing of around fifteen cents would keep us solid.
Except, remember fifteen, seventeen thousand is the lease for the, for the high school freezer. You couldn't get rid of the whole forty thousand.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But Bear Bones is just the freezer, right?
Didn't hear you.
Bear Bones is the freezer?
Yes, for three years.
And also by the action you took also to reduce the reserve fund, Reverse Fund for Stability Act also said, I'll drop that number down that half a percent.
Right, and I'll, I'll, I will run these numbers and I'll get it out to you earlier than the next meeting with, with the three percent threshold, so you see how it looks. Now while we're here, Mr. Robinson brought it up, under the capital improvement plan, again, I'm just going to go on a couple of years. FY eleven is, you've heard this before, our need for a new serving line at Matthew Thornton. And let me show you because we forget what, what a serving line looks like. It's not just a counter, stainless steel counter that runs where the people, the students leave the trays on and collect the food. Nancy can chime in, you've got warmers there, you've got equipment that keeps the food at the proper temperature to be served. That's the area that's failing. There were some jagged edges that we tape up and so forth and so on, we can handle that. It's, it's the warmers that are failing that we're being, that are being repaired that are the concern for the serving line. If you don't keep the food at the proper temperature, other, other problems will arise. That's, that's the concern. And I put this up there because I visualized the same thing, just a counter, you know, where they slide the trays around and I forgot about all the warming trays that are also part of the food service line. This is like, what, twenty-three thousand like in front of you, right?
I think so.
Twenty-three thousand plus the seventeen gets you to the, to the CIP number.
Now this is in the FY eleven budget but hasn't been spent.
This is.
Now this is the twelve.
This is FY twelve.
In eleven.
The serving line. FY eleven, we did the North School serving line.
Okay.
This, this year.
How, how old is this serving line?
About thirty years old.
So it's the last time.
Then FY twelve is the refrigerator freezer unit at Matthew Thornton. That unit is.
Maybe you want to scroll down a bit, I'm not seeing it there.
Okay, I'm sorry. I follow, I follow Matthew Thornton.
That's what caught me on the.
Twenty-three thousand, the pink line is FY twelve. Twenty-three thousand is the serving line, the estimate, the estimate, that's an estimate, but I think we're pretty close, for the walk-in refrigerator freezer at Matthew Thornton, obviously smaller than the high school unit, is about thirty thousand. That refrigerator freezer at Matthew Thornton is, we estimate, we're not a percent sure, but we know it's at least twenty-five years old. And again, it, when, when we're at, when, when we're being required to provide more fresh homemade products that can require cooling, we don't want to get to a point where either one of these, whether it's not in the freezer or the serving line, if it breaks or goes down during the school year, we've got problems. It's a six to eight week window for, for a serving line. If we lose the refrigerator freezer, we've got issues on how to keep the food fresh, cool, at room temperature and avoiding other areas. We only, we'd like to get things done one year, I'll say, before it breaks. And you can only get it, we, we can only get it done during the summer. No one would be looking every, doing a serving line in the middle of the school year. And after that, again, it's too far out to, to. And then the bottom part, I'm sorry, is your seventeen-two-hundred for the lease on the high school freezer.
Any further questions, comments? Go ahead, Jeff.
Twenty-one thousand upgrade cash register, register?
That's upgrading not only the cash registers themselves, but the software. We haven't had, we haven't upgraded and the new version that's being tested right now that we'll, we'd like to install in a year will allow our users to use not only Internet Explorer, but Firefox and this, Men, Men, Menzo, Mizzou?
Keep in mind, keep in mind, cash registers are really touch, touch computers.
I understand.
So the computers with the touch monitors for the access of menu items. So I believe there's. I'm going to cross those three.
There's a, how many registers?
Yeah.
I think there's twelve or thirteen.
District wide.
Everything works right now, right?
Slow. They'll be fine for, for a couple of years.
It's working.
It's working.
It's working.
And it's not out of support?
Not yet.
No.
That's why it's on a couple of years.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
You made a statement on the twenty-five cents, twenty-five cents just to catch up. And it sounded like it was just to catch up to the federal guidelines. The twenty-five cents is really just to put us back in the black.
Yes.
As we should be based on our expenses.
Yes, I didn't mean to say catch up with the government.
No, you didn't say it, it just, because our conversations before that were all about the, the federal responsibilities, which is kind of felt that.
I meant to say catch up to get us into financial where we are and then let the revenue flow through. Because I, because I don't want to come back with more than a nickel for the next couple of years myself.
And, and I certainly think it's reasonable to, to make sure that the program is in the black, you know, and, and it's a dollar fifty a lunch today and what we saw on the, two dollar seventy-five at high school, I think they select certain things, you know, the supersized lunch or whatever it's called.
The most, the most supersizing in a few years.
Yeah, no supersizing. But the, the other schools, you know, are quite a bit higher, you know.
And I think part of that, all kidding aside, is as I mentioned, their labor. Their, their, we, we, when we looked at salary to salary, we were average, maybe just slightly average. But a, but a major, a, a higher percentage of their staff receive health and dental and other benefits. So.
Well, I think a higher percentage of our students enjoy the meals, so you also sell more in our district, that's my perception.
Possibly. And I don't want to discriminate that other schools don't do, don't do nice jobs either.
The other thing that I want to make you aware of as well is that about four or five years ago, I sat down with Peter and Susie and we compared the labor costs of some of our entry level people. And at that time, we reduced our entry starting rate about a dollar and a half or a dollar seventy, down to nine fifty per hour. And that, and then as people retired that were making thirteen dollars an hour, we were happy to replace them with someone making nine fifty per hour. So that kept us, if you look at our labor line, it really kept us at quite a very even level for several years. And we haven't had that hap, that scenario happening as of late.
And as the economy turned down, people were happy to get those jobs.
Right.
It makes you stay a little longer.
Okay. It sounded like Ron had something cooked up, if you'll excuse that.
Oh.
Where that could even though be reduced to the fifteen, twenty cents versus the twenty-five cents, if you took a look at somebody's stat here.
Yeah, we looked at fifteen and FY twelve is, is in a deficit position.
I don't think the fifteen makes it, I think the twenty does make it, the charts here. I think once we run the numbers on the dropping of revenue, you'll, you'll see that last year come out. And again, I think you really need to look to two years. So I don't think you can go out any farther than that because you don't know what the population is going to be and how, you know.
That's why I said, look at twelve and fifteen, that's.
And, and let me, and let me be perfectly clear, I appreciate Peter's putting up with me today because I think I was on the phone with at least an hour with him on, on this issue because he knows how much I love it.
What if there were student pitches?
That's exactly right. High school student pitches.
Yes.
I know, did I do something wrong? No, I was asking permission to talk.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I, I know in past years that we have talked about, you know, increasing this slowly over time and that we've avoided that and I, and I'm, I'm pleased that we did that. But I'm also comfortable that we're, we're, take it with what you've been serving, we'll, we'll get it so that it's, you know, in the black. I think that that's a reasonable thing to do. I do have one.
Another reason why the meal policy also was to have something to fall back on.
Yeah. On, on the, on that point though, although I'm comfortable this time going up with it, I, I don't necessarily know that this board, I think it's good for us for planning purposes. I don't necessarily think we should be encumbering future boards to say, you know, this is all automatically going to go up to five cents a year. I think that should be up to the future boards. It's good for us to plan ahead, but if I'm not sitting here.
Well, I'm just using projections as, like scenarios.
If I'm not sitting here, I, I would rather that my neighbor be mad at somebody else if, you know, it's got to get raised quite a bit. But the one thing I've got to ask you because it's driving me nuts, the, the federal guidelines, looking to the future, you talk about fresh foods. So you've convinced me over the years that frozen is better and that we shouldn't be eating canned food. And I live in New England and I have switched from canned green beans to frozen green beans. Are you saying that the federal government is saying that we will need to serve fresh green beans in the middle of winter?
All I know is that there's a big push for fresh fruits and vegetables.
Okay.
Now, serving green beans in the middle of winter is not necessarily a good choice, but serving a more winter hearty vegetable like squashes and cauliflower and broccoli might be better choices. I know you're getting all excited.
I'm going tomorrow.
Hold that down. But, you know, you, you have to make seasonal choices. But we have been serving zucchini and summer squash and peppers and stuff all winter and, and they've been fine and available and the prices have not been outrageous.
Maybe we need a hydroponic greenhouse.
Pardon me?
Maybe we need a hydroponic greenhouse.
Many school districts do that.
I, I, I just think it's unrealistic for people that live in a temperate climate to be making decisions about what.
The, the school lunch administrat, the school lunch association has addressed that to the federal government and asked them to consider frozen as a, a good nutritional alternative. So we're kind of waiting for, they, they did write as an eleven-page letter to the, to Tom Blasick and the department in charge of this project and we're waiting for the outcome of that.
It's also a financial consideration. I mean, I, I use the green beans today to stretch my ramen noodles. These are tough economic times.
I know.
So I, I just, frozen seems to be a reasonable choice.
Thank you. Anything else?
Couple of questions. Peter, one of the things you mentioned on one of the slides, you showed that a bunch of the school districts weren't planning on to raise it. How are they meeting the federal's guidelines about raising it?
Well, they said, a couple of them said no, and then they said, oh, well, maybe we're going to think about it because of the new law. Today, and then a couple, I think when Cindy asked, they hadn't even gone to the board and talked to them about the new law yet.
And the other question is, how is Salem doing it cheaper than we are?
They're not cheaper than we are.
Yes, they were.
They're a dollar eighty, we're a dollar fifty.
Okay, how are they doing it that, because they weren't thinking about raising it either? What are they doing differently?
Well, but if they're a dollar eighty, like we get twenty-five cents, we're a dollar seventy-five.
I'll get the numbers out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll talk to their food service director and find out.
Okay.
I have, I just one other thing, I did hear this on some news service today or read it on some news service today. Some school district somewhere in the United States actually eliminated the ability for people to bring their own lunch.
Yes, Chicago.
Chicago, okay. And the reason for that was because they wanted to make sure that people had healthy lunches and they feared that they were bringing unhealthy food with them.
I believe now that they've been doing all these studies and school meals have been changing, that statistics are showing that there are higher calories, higher sodium and higher fat in these lunch brought from home than there is from the lunch bought at school.
Sure is.
We'll be now.
But, so they're outlined.
Right.
That's just one school district in one town.
It's about choice.
Actually, it's not even one school district, it's one school within a district in Chicago.
Something we should keep an eye on. Chicago brought us a lot of.
It's already.
I'm, I'm sure it has something to do with the carding contract.
I'll be one of the revenue issues too. Okay, anything else? Thank you Nancy, thank you Peter.
We will, we will be visiting you in two weeks.
Can't wait. Goes with lunches past, huh?
Good customers.
Okay. Nate, back to you.
Yes, we had scheduled, oh, here we go, April enrollment. Geez, I. Take a look, our, our numbers. For, we are a plus seven for April. Total numbers of going from LEAP, including special ed out of district, the home study and adult ed, five thousand and ten, which is up seven from March. Here we are. And adult ed, we have forty-nine-nine students and twenty-three day students.
Questions? All right. Legislative update, Nate?
Right. Due to lateness of the hour, I think I can, if, I can make it real short.
Go ahead.
Okay? The real short is, who knows?
Too short.
There's been crossover, there are committees of conference have started regarding the, one of the major bills, which is the retirement bill, which has, as the board is aware, a variety of impacts on the district as far as what the state is or is not going to pick up, which had a big impact on, on us. The, there is a difference between the House legislation, House budget and the Senate The Senate appears at this point in their budget bill to put back in money for vocational tuition and transportation. The House side had taken that way down from the, what had been the recommended almost ten million, down to a little bit less than five million. Big problem would have been that they would not, the state would not have had maintenance of effort, which would have meant that the state would have lost six million dollars in Perkins money for vocational. The Senate at this point in their budget has put back in a million two so that we have a maintenance of effort, so hopefully that will help. But that's really only seventy-one percent of the seventy-five percent that they usually pick up for bulk tuition and transportation, which is going to impact us. As a matter of fact, it's impacting us this year in that we're going to have to pay more for tuition for our kids to go to Manchester and Alverne and will also have an impact on next year's budget, same, same impact. It appears at this point that catastrophic aid and building aid will probably be level funded, meaning it pretty much at this year's levels. Keep in mind, cat aid is coming in still at only sixty, sixty-one percent, so it's still below, but it appears that building, excuse me, building aid will be level funded. One of the key issues for us is on both the House and Senate side, it appears that they're going to hold, in a sense, for lack of a better term, hold people homeless inadequately. So in both the House bill and the Senate bill, what is going to happen is we will, if these things go through, and, and keep in mind that once things go into committee of conference, it's kind of like pouring molasses, it goes slowly and it winds up in. It goes slowly and winds up in places you're not really thrilled about. And it takes so long time. So who knows how it's going to lay out. But what the idea was to eliminate the significant increases for some of the communities and the significant losses for other communities. Like, for instance, Derry was scheduled to lose seven million dollars, and there were other communities that were supposed to get increases of seven, eight, nine, ten million dollars. Basically, what's going to, I think is going to happen is people will wind up with approximately the same amount of adequacy for next year as they received this year, give or take, some numbers based on enrollment. Both the House and Senate side, there are provisions to allow for the school board to call for a special school district meeting, right? Why is that important for us? In the governor's proposed budget, if you remember, he eliminated or did not have in his budget thirty-five percent that the state was supposed to pick up for retirement. For us, that's a one point four million dollar hole. The House is saying, they're not putting money in, but what they're going to recommend is increase the employee contribution rate by two percent. And they're, they're saying then that would cover the thirty-five percent. I don't think it's going to come anywhere as close to the thirty-five percent. That's number one. The Senate is talking about funding probably to the twenty, twenty-five percent level, which might be a combination of the two percent increase and additional monies, one way or the other. Why is that important to us? We have a, whoops, I'm going the wrong way, a ceiling on our expenditures based on the vote, which is sixty-three million and change, okay? We never budgeted for the thirty-five percent retirement, we had never had, because that money goes from one state coffer to the retirement. By not funding that thirty-five percent or the twenty-five percent, which was this year, okay? That leaves a hole in the appropriation side that can't be made up with additional revenue. So what we're required to do, as the board knows, is we're legally obligated to pay that thirty-five percent. So that's roughly one point four million dollars for us. So in order to meet that obligation, we have to cut or redirect funds from one point four million dollars worth of services, programs, and personnel. If we get the increase in adequacy above what we had budgeted for, okay, and we're told we were going to drop about one point six million, so let's say, just for the sake of argument, one point six back. If, we would then have, depending on what the final retirement number is, all right? We could request a special school district meeting to increase our appropriation so that we could get back to the level of services and programs that people had voted on, with all of us believing the state was going to pick up the thirty-five percent, all right? So if it's, if, just let's say for the sake of argument, if it's a one point six million, one point five million increase in adequacy, and let's say they don't fund anything in, on the retirement side, that creates a one point four million dollar hole on the expenditure side. The board could call for a special school district meeting, ask to increase our appropriation by that amount of money, and still not increase the tax rate. See where, okay, see where I'm going? And then that would allow us to get back to the level of programs and services that we had told everybody they would get based on the budget that was voted on. All right? So there are a number of, and in the law, it allows the board to call for a special school district meeting without having to go to court. All right? So once we know what is in the state budget, and it may take a couple of guesses too, because depending on where they finally wind up with retirement, if it's two percent or N-plus money, or if it's all, we're going to pick up twenty-five percent. And then we have to see how that lays out. The other thing that you must keep in mind is that when the legislature asks the retirement system to go back and take a look at the rates, if they go back and recalculate, even though they had just done a two-year rate, the auditors are saying that the retirement system, in anticipating eight and a half percent return, is too high. And it should be more like seven, seven and a half or seven point three. That could have an impact on the employer rate. And we might not know that to January, all right? Which is something that we'd be responsible for, all right? So it's safe to say, there is a whole bunch of stuff that's in flux, that it changes on a daily basis. And keep in mind, it's committee of conference, because there's a different retirement bill on the House side and on the Senate side. The Senate looked to put back, disagreed with approximately two hundred million dollars worth of reductions that the House made regarding the Justice Department and the CHINS and Health and Human Services, and taking away basically all funding for handicapped adults and so on, okay? And restoring some of the reductions that were made on the education side. So for the Senate to meet their obligation, what they have to do is find about two hundred million dollars, either in additional revenue or in adjustments to other parts of the budget, to address all those things, or somewhere in between, depending on where they wind up. And John, you were up in the legislature and you guys have been around a while, it all depends on what happens. And committees of conference can be very interesting, to say the least. The other complicating factor, just to confuse everything a little more, is that on some bills, and including in the budget, you have footnotes. And the footnotes sometimes can take a fair amount of time to figure out what the cost impact is on those particular footnotes too, regarding the budget and the whole bit. And keep in mind, there are really two budget bills. It would be Senate Bill One or HB One and Senate Bill Two or HB Two. The second one is the trailer, okay, which sometimes gets loaded with stuff. So you might think you got one thing in HB One, and it turns out it's slightly different in HB Two because of a policy or, you know, some other thing that somebody slipped in. We are monitoring this very closely to see what's going on. We'll keep you informed as we know it, and what I tell you on Tuesday may be completely different on Wednesday. So, you know, don't take what I'm saying to you as gospel and this is going to work. But I do think, the one thing that I think will happen is that the adequacy, we'll probably wind up with adequacy pretty close to where we are. But there's a worm in the apple, okay? And here's what the worm is, just so it.
Extra protein.
Yes, it is, and it's nutrient-rich. Dense, rather. In both the House side and Senate side, they changed the formula in adequacy. Now, they've got basically, for lack of a better term, for the biennium, a maintenance differential, so that districts like Londonderry wouldn't lose money, et cetera. But they changed the internal workings of the formula. So theoretically, after the biennium, okay, if nothing changes, what we would expect to get in adequacy, and what most districts would expect to get in adequacy, will be less, because they've changed the component parts, the value of the component parts, surprise, surprise. Now, I don't want to be Machiavellian in, I'm looking at, I don't want to look, I wouldn't call it a gift horse, but a horse with at least half their teeth, looking at it for next year, is that this may in fact be a bridge, if you want to call it, for the constitutional amendment that will in fact, my guarantee, will pass both the House and the Senate. And will probably be on the ballot in 2012. So, but this is going to be an ongoing battle, so the adequacy wars, I think, for lack of a better term, are far from over, all right? But in the short, for the short term, meaning the biennium, if, 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 and if, it appears we'll wind up with pretty much the same level of adequacy, which, because of the retirement fiasco, and will give us at least a way to go back and get the same level of service that we had told people they were going to get based on the budget that was passed, without, excuse me, necessarily increasing the tax rate above what was said. Caveat, just in, depending upon what they give us, where the cat aid winds up and where billing aid winds up, you know, and that kind of stuff. So it's an if, and a if. But we'll have to wait and see what that cavity is, if you want to call it, on the appropriation side. And really carry a little bit of an insurance policy, because I can't tell you at this point whether or not the employer rate will get adjusted and when it would get adjusted and the whole bit. So there we go.
I think one of the things we have to be very clear to public is when they'll see all these words come out that the adequacy aid has been reestablished. People are not going to go back to the budget that we presented in March.
Right.
But the budget we presented in November that you made those cuts, of course, that was reduced. So the answer is, they're giving, we're wanting to take it away. It's not that we can reduce, we can restore, we put in the positions that we had in the budget previously that we cut because of that cut. That's the big thing, is just to make up the difference.
Where I would recommend that the board go is to the level of programs and services that we had in the budget that was presented in March, that the board approved and sent forward, not the budget that we're working on this year.
But I think that's what we have to explain to the public, because I think there's going to be a misperception that why aren't you putting back those people that were there? That's, 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 that's our job to do is to present that.
And it's very interesting, if I understand it correctly too, that basically this is one of those instances where the board, in essence, control, the board calls the meeting, the board presents the warrant, you can't really increase, on one of the sides, you, people can't increase the amount that you're asking for. They really can't decrease it either, but they can decrease, if in fact you were asking for a decrease, they could increase your decrease. I'm sorry, it's, that's where it stands right now, so.
I was going to say that answered my question. But let me ask the question. So if we do a special meeting that's authorized by the court.
Right.
The box is not open again for the public to increase the budget.
Not, no.
Beyond where.
What you're, what you're asking for. All right, so if you say you want to increase the appropriation by six hundred thousand dollars, okay? That's as high as you can go.
To make it level with what the voters voted on in March.
Right, so you can, right, so in other words, people can't put amendments on that, so if.
So the legislative body of the deliberative session could not increase that beyond what we set.
It's almost like I have an inquiry.
Exactly, are you saying that the state legislature has passed a law that says.
They haven't passed anything. What I'm saying is, as, one of the proviso, one of the things is, and I can, let me see, I think I have it, let me read it.
But the nugget of this is that they're, they appear to be moving toward a law that says that we can hold a meeting and the voters who come can't change what's put before them.
Unless you propose a decrease, people can vote to increase your decrease but not exceed what was there.
They can have additional decreases but not increase.
No, you can't decrease more, but you can decrease less.
So their intent is to put a cap?
I guess you could say that.
Yes, yes.
It makes sense.
But they're bridging the rights of the individual voters who show up.
But it makes sense with the legislative body, if that's the intent. It's okay to be lower, not higher.
That is correct. It's okay, they.
What words to add?
No, hang on, we can't do that, we've got to do non-public.
No, I know that, but motions are good to.
I motion, I motion we move to non-public under RSA ninety-one eighty-three, section two, A through F.
Second.
Motion by John, brought up by Ron, all in favor, this is a roll call, vote aye, John.
Aye.
Very much, and good night.